Okay, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. We are having some technical difficulties with the live stream, but this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the district website tomorrow at the link that is shown in the notice. So clearly, the COVID-19 pandemic is ongoing, and that explains these kind of weird situations that we are in. So we have some items on the agenda that I need to remove. So the two presentations due to miscommunication and scheduling, those presentations will be provided at the August meeting, the regular business meeting, I believe, on the 14th. Minutes are unavailable for our approval at this time, so we will move directly into the August 11th, 2020 consent agenda review. Are there questions or comments for Dr. Adams on the August consent agenda?
I have a general question. Based on things changing every minute, are there any changes to any of the responses or requests as of right now?
No, sir, no changes that I can think of. We were going to put on the agenda for the next month, the stadium at Busch, because we obviously just got word that we were going to be able to utilize it, and it didn't meet the August agenda. But we've taken that off in light of the cancellation today. And so that would have been the only thing that I've been working on for this particular agenda meeting, agenda. But it's nothing in the August agenda right now that is, that there's a concern or issue relative to.
Okay, oh, I just.
Oh. Those are the questions that were provided from the president, and I think I responded to all of them, but.
Yeah, how is this asking, just as things continue to change?
Oh. Oh, no, sir, no, sir. I understand what you're saying. No, not at this time, no, sir.
Other questions regarding any of the August?
Other questions regarding the August consent agenda items? Either, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Dorothy, I did have some questions, and I've submitted them to Dr. Adams.
Yes, I received Dr. Roberts' questions this morning. I indicated to her I would have those prepared for her at the end of, by tomorrow. I didn't have an opportunity to answer all of the questions.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll provide them back to you so to get to everybody, but.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to superintendent updates. So I know we have school restart and renaming policy. I didn't know if you had any other updates, kind of with the graduation, but.
Yeah, the first update the board received early this morning, correspondence from me after some conversations with the Department of Health. Yesterday, they called the Busch Stadium and indicated that the ceremonies would be canceled for today, for Thursday. Obviously, we were incredibly disappointed for our student population and for staff that has worked really hard to try to pull this off. But in light of the cases increasing across the city and the county, there were two press conferences that were held on yesterday, one by the mayor, at least on Facebook Live, where she alluded to the fact that the cases were rising. And as a result, several bars were closed down for, I think, to be exact. And the county, same kind of conversation from the county at 10:30 on yesterday. Sam Page said a similar kind of statement indicating that the number of cases were rising. As a result of that, there were six or seven things that he implemented, and one, obviously, being reducing the number of persons who were going to be in any one place at any point in time. He also indicated at that point in time that he thought all school districts in the county would at some point in time move to a status of virtual 100%. And obviously, that has yet to be determined. But there's a meeting at 8:30 tomorrow morning, which superintendents will talk again on the county and the city relative to that. And I will be talking about some of that tonight. But the only other issue is the notion that the graduation was canceled. We are not rescheduling. We have tried to make this work at Busch Stadium. And obviously, because of the timing, it does not make sense to continue to push this down the road. But we are going to try to make sure that all of the items that students were expected to receive will have an opportunity to try to get those to the students over the next week. Principals are working hard to try to make that occur. So that's the, that's the only other item that's not on the agenda. I'd like to give the board an update and the public as well.
Thank you.
The other item is the restart. On Sunday afternoon, Sunday, sometimes I provide the board with a document. If the board has a copy of that document, don't have a copy of that document, it is in your packet. And you should have it in front of you, because I will, for the next five or 10 minutes, speak to this particular document that you received. And I'll read some of it, but allude to some of it as well. Obviously, in the, in the packet as well, you have a book that looks like this. This is the Back to School reopening book that is in everyone's packet. This was the final document that was, that is online, that framed the recommendation that are made publicly to the board and on the 20th, whereas all districts were expected to give their update. And we indicated that we would be providing three options. And this book is for your preferential, you can look at it. Obviously, if I make a recommendation tonight that changes, we'll, we'll make some addendums to the, to the book. But basically, we gave parents three options. Online, admin program, admin program, virtual, meaning that they would have a teacher in front of them on a regular basis, and online. So we have provided our families as of last Monday with a commitment form where they can go online and fill out the form. At this point in time, as of two hours ago prior to the meeting starting, about 65% of the families, 59% virtual, and 6% amended, which would still be virtual, just a different form of virtual. Our parents wanted their students to be online for instruction. 35% of the parents are indicating that they want in-person. This is based on a current response rate of about 62%. Now, the deadline is next, is Thursday coming. But at this point in time, where we are as of 4 o'clock today, it was at 62%. The initial survey data that we, that I informed the board about as we were looking to make a decision, they had about 35% of the parents indicating that they wanted their students to be online for instruction, and 65% wanting in-person. Now, this survey closed approximately the last week in June. Sometime around that time, first weekend in July is when we closed that survey. At that time, the response rate was about 73%, about 11% less than what it is right now, understanding that we still have another week, not another week, another two days before the, it closes. This is vastly different from the commitment form results that I just talked about just a few minutes ago. And as a result of this data and the other data, and I'm not going to go over the numbers here, because I don't think they're, I don't want to, they're not necessarily numbers I want to indicate here. We have an increase in COVID cases. Obviously, if things were canceled, as they were on yesterday, our graduation, as well as what the county is indicating as well, there's an increase in COVID cases. There also is a delay in testing. I have one of my employees who's a network superintendent who took the test on Tuesday, and they indicated 14 days before the test results will be coming back. So that if anyone was impacted by the virus or alleged to have the virus, and contact tracing would take place, it would take a long time before the results would come back. That would be students as well as staff. The increase in the number of teacher vacancies, you see what the numbers are before you at this point in time. But over the last two weeks, the number of teacher vacancies have increased, which much, which is much more problematic for us is that we don't see the number of persons signing contracts as we've seen in the past. So not only has the number gone up in terms of vacancies, the number of persons indicating they want to work in the district, not just in our district, but any district, raises a level of concern for us. We normally have a large number of vacancies at this time, but we see an uptick in people signing contracts and wanting to, to work. That is not happening now. We also have an increase in the number of FMLAs. The numbers I show you here, we normally have five or 10. And that number is tenfold than what you see at this point in time. Lastly, we have a, we have a shortage of, shortages of custodians, some because of FMLA and some because of the natural vacancies. And so if we're going to keep buildings clean, at least all 68 buildings, that becomes problematic for us. So as of this writing, this time, I am recommending that all students would be online for instruction for the first quarter, which ends on October the 16th, 2020. We will assess the environment and determine the possible next steps at that time. But at this point in time, that would be my recommendation. That is a shift from what the recommendation was previously. But obviously, because of the data I just indicated and the uptick in cases across the region, and quite frankly, a momentum around persons believing that it is unsafe to be in school buildings, at least to the level that they would have historically been, is problematic for us, and that is my recommendation. I also make the following other recommendations. I'm recommending, as a result of us going virtual, that we push the school's start date back to Monday, August 31st, which gives us two weeks of professional development to assist staff in preparing for virtual instruction, the deployment of technology, and communication with parents and, and students. As you might imagine, there are students who have never met their teachers. And so we have to make sure that there is a connection that takes place. In your packet as well, you have a draft document that says 2020, 21, Back to School theme. Every teacher is a virtual teacher. On the backside of that, it lays out the 10 days of professional development. It is a draft. You just turn it, flip it over. It lays out what the 10 days look, look like in terms of site-based days, district YPD, network site base, as well as technology training and distribution would take place. And so this is a tentative calendar on those 10 days. We're still tweaking and working with it. We have a principal training on tomorrow and on Thursday, and we'll have further conversation and input from them prior to making a final decision. But I wanted to let you see that there, that we have taken some steps in terms of putting together a plan and what PD would look like. The, the second thing I will be recommending as relates to the calendar is the removing the professional development day that's scheduled for September the 18th. We will only have been in school about a week and a half, and it doesn't make sense to shift to a full-day professional development. We would look to go to September 25th, 2020, with a half-day of students and a half-day of professional development. Since everyone is going to be online, we could stop the instruction during the school day online, and teachers can do zooming for PD. So that way, we would still have a full day of instruction on the 18th as opposed to shifting it. Lastly, I would like to move the, the start times to all schools from 8:15 to 3:12 for this particular week. I mean, not for the particular week, but for this particular quarter. Normally, as you know, we have five different times for schools. We start at 7:00, 10:00, 7:30, 8:00, 8:15, 9:00, 9:30. What we'll be doing since all, the entire district will be virtual is we do 100% all schools, starting at 8:15 and ending at 3:12. It still keeps us in line with the number of minutes that we have right now for single schools. Lastly, the last item, not the last item, but the next item, is part of the virtual plan is to develop technology centers across the city, two to four sites to support students, parents, and staffs with any kind of technology issues. Obviously, we will look at the locations such that families could get to those locations. And they would also have an opportunity to call, and I'll cover that in a second. But technology centers where persons can come and give issues with technology, issues with uploading and all of those kinds of things for staff, students, as well as parents. Recommendation number five would be that since all students will be online, all students will be online. So I want to say that again, such that the teacher of record will be the teacher where they are in school. But we will look to open instructional support centers anywhere from 1 to 20 sites across the city. And these sites will be open from 8:30, at least from 8 until 3:30. We will not, we will have a maximum of 150 students in these buildings. The limit to class size to about 10 students. We would be there to provide instructional support to students, but the student's teacher of record will be the teacher that they are housed in. These would be support staffs, such that they are providing additional support to students who might need to have that additional support, whose parents are working, and all of those kinds of things. We will provide breakfast and lunch. We will provide counseling services. We would, this would also act as a food distribution site. As you know, we were providing some 2,200 meals every Friday. The hope and belief is that these sites could continue to act in that way such that families can pick up food who are, who are at home doing virtual instruction with their child. And obviously, the kids who are in those sites could eat as well. We will look to provide related arts to students, art, as well as music, not the choir piece, because they can't, part of the recommendations, that there's not a lot of singing that takes place. And you see some of the staff that will be available. We will look at some of our teachers, our nurses, social workers, counselors, all of those kind of persons who would not be assigned to schools to look to support that effort. I'm meeting with Mr. Cummings on Friday morning to discuss the possibility of what this might look like for staff that might not be aligned to a school building. And lastly, we will provide transportation as needed to families such that they can get to that site. The only group of families that we will be looking to would be the 35% that indicated that they wanted virtual. So if a family indicated that they, I'm sorry, that they wanted in-school. If a family indicated that they wanted virtual, they've already worked out the details of what they're going to do with their children. And, but these families will be targeted to 35%, not the entire district, which leaves about 6,000 families. And I would suspect about half that number would say they would need support. The intent is that we will call to verify their interest with parents after the survey closes on the 30th. We will start making calls as early as Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, so we would know what the numbers would be. We would identify the sites on the 5th, and we would provide the information of transportation such as that they could start the, the routes that would need to go across the city to pick up kids. This is one way to address the need. As I looked at the information coming back from families, it was clear to me that we have a large number of families who are indicating, my child needs to be in school, the social, emotional challenges, as well as I have to work. And so we were looking to provide an avenue for these families. I want to add that I, in a conversation with one of our partners today, there is a phone call on Friday. So we are also going to be looking at entities like YMCA and other agencies who could likely provide this kind of support as well. To a degree possible, if we can't provide the support, we will be looking to our partners who are interested right now in coming into our buildings or leveraging their sites to do so. And I would suspect that I would have an update to the board as early as next week. In addition to that, all buildings are going to be open, whether it's one of these 20 sites. So not every building is going to be open from 8 to 3:30 daily with an administrator, a secretary, one security guard, and a family community specialist will be required to be in every single building every single day. Teachers will have the option to come in to do their instruction from their classroom, as well as get resources and materials. And it is likely that on certain days, we will have staff come to the buildings as well for, for support and all of those kinds of things. We haven't defined exactly what those days look like, if it's going to be one day, two days, no days. But we're working through that piece at this point in time. We also will need to have very, very specific details on how we are going to support these groups and develop technical support on the short-term and long-term basis. That includes videos, call center, or, and hotlines. So the intent is that we will have hotlines established. The deadline for my staff to provide that to me is tomorrow, the 28th. And they're working on what that looks like for teachers to have a hotline, parents to have a hotline, students to have a hotline to get support, and videos about how to turn on the equipment and do those kinds of things. Part of what would happen in this professional development time between the 24th and the 28th is that when students come to pick up their technology, they will be provided professional development from their teachers or teachers such that they know how to use the equipment and that kind of stuff, because they won't have an opportunity for brand-new kids coming in to do that. We, a specific plan for distribution of technology, we talked about it a little bit on yesterday. We'll be talking to principals about it, and that will be finalized by tomorrow. And, and we need a detailed, transparent, detailed plan for cleaning such that everyone knows what we'll be doing at 8 o'clock in the morning, 9 o'clock in the morning, 10 o'clock, in all of these sites. And that is due to me on the 30th as well. Staff has been working on all of these things. The red indicates those are the due dates to me. It doesn't mean that it's something for the board to look at at this point in time, but those are due dates for me to review and obviously to finalize. The last item, which is an item that I do want to call the board's attention, the list of personnel positions that you see listed at the bottom of page two, as well as the top of page three, are positions, and it indicates if we believe at this point in time, if a change in the job description could allow these entities, these positions, to transfer into a position that could support what needs to be done. It is obvious to me, and I'm sure obvious to the board, that all of the positions you see listed here don't have the same kind of requirement, if you will, or are not in line with doing virtual instruction as teachers are doing. So these are, I don't want to call them ancillary, but they're support positions that normally support a school when we're in a brick-and-mortar, in-person modality, not necessarily in this kind of modality that we're talking about. While on March 13th, we worked to try to make sure we employed everyone and supported everyone, it is doubtful in my view right now that we will have the same ability to do so moving forward. So to that end, I will be asking the board by Zoom or in-person for an emergency board meeting next week with intent of walking through what this might mean for our employees once I get some data and information coming back, and also meet with the local union on Friday to talk about what the possibilities are, what the options might be. But I think it is highly possible that I will be asking the board, or I'll be making some recommendations to the board relative to reduction in force. But I don't want to, well, I guess I've already said it. But the, the bottom line is I don't, I want the board to be aware, as I warned the board at the last meeting, that one of the possibilities that could exist for this, for that to happen would be if we went 100% to virtual, which we are, which I am strongly recommending at this time based on the new information we had. The plan that I provided to the board initially, I indicated this will be a flexible plan, and it is changing on a regular basis. And obviously, it's changing for me to make a recommendation around virtual. Hopefully, we'll be coming back sometimes in the second week of October and making another recommendation to extend this, to end this. The number of cases that happen in the city and the county would drive, as you know, the, a lot of this. And so the data relative to that will kind of drive that. So the board received this on, on Sunday, I think, and I'm obviously willing to take any kind of questions relative to it. Part of the challenge that I, that I want the board to know is that we have to be very flexible, because these are changing times, and we will work and do everything in our power to make sure that we are leveraging every single staff member to the extent that we can, and make sure that we are providing support to our families as much as we can. I want to put an equity question or issue on the, on the table, because I had this conversation with my staff as well. The notion of using staff that would not be our teaching workforce may give the impression that we are looking at our lowest level of employees to put in this position. That is not my intent. My intent is to leverage anyone who wants to work in this environment and obviously, support them. There may be some changes in compensation to try to address that, not to pay people to put them in dangerous situations. But I am mindful of that fact. But I'm also mindful that we have a budget challenge that has to be addressed. And the continuation of leveraging personnel who may not be deeply engaged in a learning process as they would be in a brick-and-mortar situation or in-person situation raises a level of concern for me and transparency around how we manage our dollars and resources. So I want to put all of those things on the table and obviously, take any kind of questions that the board might have at this time.
Just to clarify, so we will go through the staff choosing emergency session?
I would ask the board, yes, sir, to do that, in an emergency session. Because it's personnel, and I would like to have a conversation with the board in closed session relative to that.
So when you say emergency, it will be not, not emergency as sunshine law refers to, it will have more than 24 hours notice.
Oh, yes. I will work with counsel to schedule a meeting and the board president next week. I think I'll be prepared sometime on Tuesday, possibly as early as Tuesday, but as late as Friday, to have a conversation by Zoom or in-person for this kind of conversation.
Well, Dr. Adams, I appreciate the recommendation to go virtual. And I'm, I'm very much interested in the discussion around the changes outlined under the Accountability Plan that we can speak to at a later time.
Yes, ma'am, that's the closed session conversation. Yes, ma'am.
So my first question, I don't have too many. You know, it's interesting, back in February, we were talking about starting school earlier.
Wrong, wrong.
Things change. But I guess my overall first question is just, do you anticipate any negative financial impact to starting later?
No, sir, I do not. We have approximately 13 days built into our calendar. And we don't think we'll be doing snow days, because students will have their technology. And if they go to a snow day, guess what they can do? They could go online, and that becomes a day of school for them. So I see this as a plus, if you will. I do, I do not see us extending the school year at all. Whatever the stop date is, that we will still say is the stop date. So no, sir, I do not see any negative financial implications at this point in time. What we do know is if, if we remain virtual at the entire year, the state allows you 94% reimbursement, 94% attendance reimbursement, if kids pass the courses. And so virtual would, quite frankly, leverage more dollars for us than opposed to less if we stay in that modality. I don't anticipate that happening. If we, if we change, then it'll move back to the brick-and-mortar number of kids actually coming in. But I do not anticipate a financial impact at this point in time.
Okay. And then the second question around that in terms of buses. So if we're not, does that change our contract?
That is an excellent question. I will defer to my esteemed legal counsel.
Oh, right. And that might not be an open session.
Yeah, that would be a conversation at the next board meeting. I will definitely be addressing this issue.
Thank you.
Dr. Adams, is there a need for board approval since the calendar is being changed?
That is an excellent question, and the answer is yes. I was going to, at the end, ask the board if they will be willing to approve the calendar change, because that's really the only issue that I'm asking the board to really do. The other items, the board did not weigh into the initial recommendation. So I'm asking the board to weigh into this one as relates to the calendar change.
Dr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
I see that we have the layout for the virtual teacher model.
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be some time where parents are able to learn these specific teams? Because I've found that after speaking with some parents, and even myself, in learning some of these things prior to guiding their students through it, to even connect with the teacher. So do you, do we have some time carved out for that? Maybe one or two days for parents to learn any of these things, or videos that will be created for our parents?
Yes, ma'am, that is exactly correct. What I would, would like to, what, I'm sorry, what will be on the table on the 11th is I will have staff come to give the board a full virtual update on every single item. I spoke to the president about this two or three days ago. And so Dr. Knight, Ms. Mitchell, and her team, Ms. Moody, will be coming in and walking the board through an actual virtual lesson, what will happen in every single classroom, how is it going to roll out. And so that will be a, an item on the agenda for the 11th. That'll be before staff comes back, but they will walk through the details of it. I feel inadequate to do so, quite frankly, because I've not been close to it, as close as I probably would have been in the past. But staff will be coming to provide you with a full virtual update. I brought the book, I think Ms. Jones and I had a short conversation today. This is the book, but it's a lot in here. And I want them to kind of walk you through what it looks like, what a lesson looks like, what a teacher's experience will look like, what a student experience will look like, and the entire curriculum that was supported. So, yes, ma'am, yes, that, that will be occurring.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Adams. And my next question is, in the event, so moving to number five and discussing the instructional support centers, in the event that a teacher and or student become sick with COVID, what is, what are the processes under, yeah, that we have in place to handle this situation?
So the, in the, in this particular book, we kind of lay out what that recommendation is, and it would be the same recommendation again. The hope and belief is that with the small numbers and the limited amount of persons in that building, we would be able to do the contact, now the contact tracing, as well as keep kids separately. But the health department is the guiding entity on that. They tell us what to do. What they have told us in the past, Mrs. Jones, is if persons have on masks and they are six feet away, it is likely that there will not be any other kind of changes or any kind of quarantining and those kinds of things. But they will make that determination after doing contact tracing.
Okay. And my last question for now is, do we have anything set up in the classrooms to help promote that? So do we have anything, any safeguards around the students' desk, the teacher's desk, yeah, to, to make sure that they are able to keep that distance?
So it is my hope and belief that we will have adequate staff in every one of these rooms, since we are talking about 1 to 20, rooms, since we are talking about 1 to 20, and we have a large number of staff that will not be engaged in a normal situation, that we will be able to monitor that piece. If I can get away with five in a room, or six or seven in a room, that is my intent, but I have to weigh this based upon who says they want to send their child to a location. So, we are looking at the possibility of also having those Plexiglas.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
And comms. We are looking at that for this population as well. We have not purchased any now, because we were not going to do so for the regular instruction, but since we're moving to this piece, and we think we have enough time, I looked at some today as a matter of fact, there is a possibility that we'll be purchasing some of those for some of the classes to make sure that that student is not, not able to allow any kind of exposure.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Adams.
You mentioned the presentation, not an additional question, because I want to yield, but with that presentation, I just know that my first question is going to be what makes, just so that team is prepared, and they're not caught off guard, would be what makes, if they could just describe what's going to make this August going forward different from what happened in March, knowing that, again, March, we were caught off guard, unprepared, and just making, and where grades weren't counted, quote unquote, and since they are going to count, just knowing what, what they learned from that experience, and if they could explain that to us.
I guarantee you, I've asked that question over and over again, and so they have a, they've done a lot of work in this area, and I feel very comfortable where we are, but yes, that is an excellent question. As a matter of fact, when I met with, and I did not say this, I did meet with 22 teachers after my last presentation, I met with security guards as well, security guards as well as counselors, and they gave me great feedback and lent it, lent it, their conversation lent it to this, this recommendation I'm making as well. What they said is, what teachers said, is that that was thrown upon us, we didn't have enough time to plan, it was kind of thrown together, it would definitely be different than it was before. Many of them have been going to booster sessions and getting trained, so they, they take personal pride in the fact that it did not work as well as they wanted to, because they were thrown in the middle, and they thought they did the best job they could, but they are, they will be a lot better prepared for what we will be providing moving forward, and our, and our academic team has worked really hard to get people prepared for this effort as well. So, I, I, I look forward to the presentation to the board and to the public, because I, I'm really proud of the work that they have done, and I think it's going to make a substantial difference. Virtual instruction all by itself is hard, but I think it will be a lot, much, much better, and better engagement for families and students as well. One of the big things to Mr. Lang is, we tried to give out all of the technology from central office. We will be providing technology from the school itself, so parents will come to their school, pick up their technology, meet their teacher. We didn't have the time to do that because we couldn't get staff back in building. So, that in and of itself in terms of how it's going to be delivered, and we will also be dropping off technologies to persons' homes, and we didn't have that ability to do so before. So, those are just two things, but they, they will be glad to answer that question on the 11th.
So, I think, I, I don't think, I know that I'm in the majority of, I think, the whole country at this point, where I say that every time I see a district makes a decision to move to 100% virtual, my heart sinks a little bit, because I really do feel like we're leaving an entire generation of kids behind, in particular, the most vulnerable and most needy-est of our students, and, you know, the move to online for instruction, I think, given the circumstances that we are in, where there has not been top-down leadership at the federal and state level, and the cities and state have prioritized economic things, we don't really have much choice as far as instruction. I do think this instructional support piece is really a great way to strike that balance by still recognizing the very real need that a lot of families have from their schools, and I think structuring it in this way and saying, "We will have some places open because we know you need us," is going to be something that we look back on and are proud of having offered. So, it is important to me that this model, to the extent that it is safe, we are able to offer these sites to the families that need us. One thing that I, I think is missing from this restart plan is the special ed piece, and so I'm wondering if you can talk about how we're making sure, and not just special ed, but English language learners and other students that have needs that are very hard to address virtually? So, is it possible to leverage these instructional support centers for students, and I'm thinking of students maybe who are nonverbal, or students who have Down syndrome, students who need PT and OT, how can we use these instructional support centers to make sure we're able to provide those services to those kids and their families?
So, excellent question, and I'll cover the first one as relates to ELL students. When we looked at the data, I looked at the data closely, the only, there were only two sites that had a request for in-person that was higher than 50%. Those two sites were the ELL sites, and so it is highly likely that the teacher will be virtual, but those sites will be offered exclusively for ELL students with the support services being there. In every single case, it will be virtual, but the student support service that, services that will be provided will be provided by ELL persons in that particular building. So, we are looking at that keenly, such that that, such that NAPA and Roosevelt might be two of those sites. With less than 100 kids, as we provide support to those kids from eight until three, buildings may just be open for that purpose. Obviously, other students could come in as well, some students might be coming from Man and other locations that have ELL. The other piece is, today at 9 o'clock, with Mrs. Sanoma, myself, the special education coordinator, and one of our legal specialists that manages special ed, had that same conversation today at 9 o'clock from 9 until 9, until 10 o'clock, as we talked specifically about that. We have to treat these sites as, as if they are like after-school sites, with the idea of us providing services to the extent that we can, based on what's in their IEP. So, it is our intent to try to provide that service, but that, that is not a school, it is a support center. The teacher record from whatever school they will be in will be providing that instruction, and we will be providing the support, and if we can provide the support, either a student has 504 or special ed, and Mrs. Sanoma might jump into this as well, then we will try to have that service there to support that kid. It gets a little dicey because it's not a school, and so we're treating it as, if it is a support site, while instruction, support is being provided, it is not the instructional piece for that kid. And so, I want to make that distinction, but we are looking at that closely to make sure that we could provide all of the kind of support that the kid can get to the degree that we can. And Mrs. Sanoma, you might want to jump in, in case I missed something.
The, the only thing I would just simply add is that, as in all of these cases, there'll be a case by, very much a case-by-case analysis driven by the needs of the student who, who have elected to avail themselves of a particular support center.
So, if we, so if, if it may not be possible to offer it through these support centers, how are we making sure that we are meeting students' IEPs and 504 plans, whether they're virtual or in-person? Because that, you know, I, I feel like a broken record, but I, I don't want us to leave kids behind, and I think a move to virtual has a very real possibility of that, and there are just some things that, in my mind, cannot be provided virtually. So, how, how are we doing this?
Well, that's the challenge that is being faced by all public school districts during this pandemic. It's, it's the same challenge that was faced that began back in March. The U.S. Department of Education, the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have basically instructed school districts to do the best they can within this context, within this public health emergency. That will likely mean for families in the, in the special education context, not likely, there will definitely be compensatory services that families will be, that the district will need to offer those families, because, as you just identified, you can't meet the goals of an IEP that requires one-on-one in-person contact in a virtual setting. Having said that, that is the limitation that, that the U.S. Department of Education, DESI guidance, and as unsatisfying as that is, which is do the best you can to provide the maximum amount of services that you can to those families in the current context, while also keeping your people safe. And on the other side of this pandemic, and as the pandemic eases, we will begin to increase services to, to those families.
Okay. I, I just, to the extent possible, I would, I would love that, that to be fleshed out a little bit more, because those are really, in a lot of ways, life-saving and grounding for the families that receive those services, and just, I would just love some more thinking around that piece.
What we'll try to do, Madam President, is give you a report in terms of how many kids are being serviced and that kind of data, so you could see what we're trying to get done. But Mrs. Sanoma is correct, this is an issue for SSD in every single district in America to the degree that they can, because staff doesn't want to go to the person's home, and so it's, you can't do OT, OP and, and speech therapy sometimes overphoned of Zoom, so that's the challenge.
Right, and to be clear, I recognize this is not just a challenge that we are facing, this is a challenge that anyone's moving to virtual instruction is facing, but I have very, just real concerns about what the future looks like, not just for special ed, but for all students going in this direction, and it's, I would just say it's very frustrating as a parent and a school board person and former educator, just recognizing that children are the ones that are kind of left last year.
Yes.
It's very frustrating. I'll yield to someone else, I'll talk too much.
Dr. Adams, I have a question. Number five?
Yes, ma'am.
Providing related arts to students, how, what are the processes for doing that? How do we plan to do that?
Well, simply, in the same environment, a 10-to-1 ratio for students who would be taking PE and students who are taking art, in a 10-to-1 ratio, those 10 kids, because they'll likely be in the same room, the entire time could go outside for sports or the gym, as you clean the ball and do all of those kinds of things. So, the intent is that they're, because this is similar to a school day, it's not a school day, those students will have an opportunity to interact and play some kind of sports, although addressing a notion of social distancing. If we get outside partners like the YMCA and others, Flint Fowler and those kind of agencies, they could assist us in terms of doing this and providing that service.
Okay. And then as relates to outside of the school, for those that are doing virtual, have we explored what that would look like for our students?
No. If you're virtual, or you're talking about related arts?
Yeah, like, so for PE, like, for them just ensure that they're...
Yes, that, I met with the team today. If the kid has a schedule and their PE class was, let's say, 2 o'clock, that kid will go online and do Zooming PE with the, with the teacher, the teacher might have them stand up, do exercises, those kinds of things, but there's a curriculum that they, quite frankly, I was surprised that we're able to create to try to keep kids engaged. Obviously, a lot's going to depend upon what's happening at home and other kinds of things, but the PE teachers are all prepared to provide that. Part of what we're looking at for the technology pickup as well is providing students with all of the books they'll need for their first eight weeks, as well as art supplies and all of those things. So, a family would not only come and get their technology, they would get the instructional materials they would need to go along with that, so they're not just picking up a hotspot in a computer or that kind of stuff, they're, they're doing all of that kind of work.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Adams.
You're welcome.
Dr. Adams, I have a follow-up question. How will the district determine the level of engagement, student engagement on this virtual platform?
Last year, we had a real challenge, Dr. Roberts, in terms of our administrators, not necessarily, again, last year was a totally different situation, so I don't want to make a comparison, but to answer your question, in short, our academic instructional coaches, as well as our assistant principals and principals, will be in every single lesson. They will be scheduled to be in those lessons to see how many students are in there, will be recording the lessons, and also going back to look at it for evaluation to see how students are being engaged. So, there is a two-part process. One, staff, meaning principals, assistant principals, and AICs monitoring instruction, as it's being Zoomed, the Microsoft Teams, and also being recorded such that they can go back and look at it and provide teachers with additional support to get kids more engaged in the lesson. So, those are the two pieces that we're looking at to try to monitor. It is a three, it's a two-part piece, a monitoring and accountability. We felt that that was lacking last year.
And will teachers have some form of assessment that will be administered over the platform as well?
Yes. Again, when they come on the 11th to give you an update, they'll talk about the assessments. In the past, and I heard this in a conversation today with our team as we were having a meeting, how we have looked at assessments in the past has been formative assessments or summative assessments. These will be assessments that are done on a much more regular basis, like every week, so you can see how kids are doing, and so you're assessing the standard to see if a kid has met that particular standard as you move on to the next one. We still would do those formative assessments, but yes, teachers will be checking and doing the, the, I want to say, the, what do I want, the check for understanding on a regular basis.
Like a teacher-made test or quiz?
Teacher-made tests, that will be one way of doing it, but it will also be other ways that they'll try to do so, because a teacher-made test, you know, kid has to take the assessment, take a picture of it, and then scan it back, they'll be using assessments in a different kind of way as they do the Zooming in a Microsoft.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, we are waiting, we have a meeting with DESI next week. At this point in time, the distribution ends on the 31st. The federal government is concerned to the 31st. We were anticipating stopping on the 24th because we thought we were starting school then, so we will likely extend it to the 31st because of the reason that we won't be starting until the 31st, at least the 29th, I think it is. And then, once we get some guidelines from DESI, it is likely, hopefully, that they will allow that to continue. The challenge here, Mr. Lang, is over the summer, they didn't ask for any ID, they didn't ask who the kid was, you just picked up the food and left. Moving forward, they may be asking for a PIN number, because now we're back in a regular school session, and unless the president or the Department of, I can't think of the name of the department right now, Health and Human Services, changes something, it is likely that it's going to be tied to a kid, which makes it problematic for us to give the food in the way we did in the past. So, we won't know for another couple of weeks what recommendation is going to be made, but it will be our intent to try to let these sites be, as you just indicated, food-serving sites, so that families can pick up food. The other concern we have, Mr. Lang, is the, and I know you follow sports as I do as well, the sports entities right now are placing their players in a bubble. The intent is that the 100 kids that come, those kids are coming every single day, so we're not having any other kids come in, but if we allow other visitors to come in to pick up food, that taints that whole piece. So, we are looking at how we can control for that as well, at the same time, keep that 100 kids quarantined, if you will, who are coming on that site every single day.
So, youth sports are going to continue?
At this point in time, sports don't actually start until August the 10th, although schools can work out and do those kinds of things, as they work in pods. The, the Health Department and our, and the coaches, not the coaches, our letter director, Ms. Schoff, they have, they have been meeting for the last three weeks to determine what's going to happen. At this point in time, when a district has gone 100% virtual, there are no sports. So, that is a likelihood, but the fact that we are opening up these instructional support centers may give us the latitude to allow for sports to take place, although we may not do sports because of the danger around football, especially tennis, cross-country, those sports, we feel fairly good that they could continue, but if kids can't come to school to practice, what Ms. Schoff is saying is, they shouldn't be, they can't come to the school regular brick-and-mortar for instruction, how can they come for practice? So, that's what they're leaning towards. So, I would think there's less than a 50% chance that we will have sports.
Could you talk a little about enrollment, and if you're seeing any trends in how they might compare to previous years? So, you know, particularly thinking about the younger grades where parents may feel, you know, differently about virtual because of the, just the age of their children, are you seeing any impact to enrollment, and then how would that affect our financial outlook?
So, I am not, we normally, Madam President, have, it's, it's been very difficult over the years to identify what kids are going to come with, the notion that kids move on a regular basis, plus the notion that we have charters that we are competing with on a regular basis, for us to pinpoint our enrollment. What I'm hearing from our colleagues, however, in other places in the county, is that the enrollment numbers are declining, as families indicate that they don't want to put their children in that kind of situation. Some are saying, "I'll do homeschooling, some are going to Catholic and private and independent schools," and I'll just use an example, one small district said that they normally have 550 kindergarten kids, so far, they have 400 kids, and when they talk to families, the families say, "Hey, we're going to take a break this year, we're going to go to private or parochial school, Catholic school, we could pay for it, and we'll come back to the district next year," because things are not as stable as they want them to be. So, that's what I'm hearing from my, my external persons, I suspect it's going to have some impact on us as well, but I don't know what that impact looks like right now, to be honest with you. Principals, as you know, are getting this information, the commitment form, once they get to the 74%, 15,000, as we did on the first survey, and this is a commitment, not a survey, then we'll have a better idea, and when they start calling, then we'll know how many kids are dropping. Kids won't actually be enrolled in our school unless they come pick up their technology, unless we drop it off to them, because they're not actually enrolled until they actually start, they turn the computer on, or we put something in their hand. Unlike the past, they actually shoulder to a building, they have to engage in some way.
So, when would you expect some numbers on that, like at the August meeting?
August 11, I should have a lot better data for you. I have to have data to get to the Transportation Department and start picking up kids, so I think I'll have some good data for you as early as next week, but I'll have the best data for you when we can come back on 11.
Great. Thank you. Are there other questions as it pertains to the restart plan?
So I know I talked about this last time, and I know we had to reschedule the presentations, but supplemental programs, I'll wait till Chad's and the other group comes in, but just wanted to harp on that, too, and just make sure that, I mean, we talked about how for some students, home may not be a safe space, so just making sure they have the opportunity to talk to counselors, talk to therapists, and be able to engage in those ways around the MO, yeah, the MOUs that we recently adopted with those programs. My last question, so continuing on Dorothy's point about just those, you know, higher, those populations at a higher disadvantage, I know in March, we did try to reach out to our transient unhoused populations with relative success. Is there a plan for that, for addressing that in this new plan? And then, I guess, part, side to this question, too, is there a certain requirement for students to have technology? Like, do I have to have a physical address to be able to get technology? Or just thinking about, are there any barriers for unhoused or transient populations?
No, sir, there are no barriers at all. To answer your first question, on August the 7th and August the 11th, we are meeting with all our non, all our nonprofit partners, those that provide social emotional support as well, and we will be doing a Zoom meeting with them to find out how they are going to leverage. A lot of us going to virtual, and this meeting was set up prior to us looking to go virtual. Now that we're looking to go virtual, we want to determine how they can interface and support kids. So the 7th and 11th, we will have a Zoom meeting, invite you to it as well, any board members to listen into what we're talking about and what kind of commitments they are making. You are correct, we have, I would say, fair success, well, I'd say excellent success, only 141 students we could not find out of 21,000 last year. We just never could find 141 students, they moved and went other places. But there are no barriers at this point in time, Mr. Lang, to giving the technology to the persons and making sure we have the ability to know where our kid is, if he has the technology, there's a tracking kind of piece on it, if you will. So we don't see any barriers at all to doing that. We are, and I wouldn't want to use the word difficulty, we will start summer school for elementary kids on Monday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. On Monday, the 3rd through the 14th. And so we had over 700 kids who were engaged in summer school at the high school level, getting credit recovery. They finished on Friday.
This Friday.
This Friday is the last day that they finished, this Friday, and then we start summer school for about 2,600 kids right now. 400 are coming to pick up technology, because they're doing it online. And so we have had, I think, good success in terms of providing technology to the kids and them staying online and doing summer school. And so I feel fairly comfortable that our community has gotten better around technology and using it and access it at all times, and there are always some glitches in terms of getting stuff back. But at this point in time, I don't anticipate any issue with anybody getting technology and being able to use it, irrespective of where they live, we don't see that being a problem at all. Matter of fact, we see it as a plus, because if a kid is transient and moving from one place to another, they have the access of technology to use to try to stay connected to the school environment. And, quite frankly, if we're doing Zooming, and it's not Zooming, but Microsoft Teams, we could also see where a kid is, and hopefully, it might be a trigger to provide some services, social emotional services, based on what we're looking at.
Thank you.
So thinking about Adams' point about supplemental programs, I think that is supremely important all the time, but especially this year. And I think this is probably me dreaming a little bit, but I would really love to see us use the technology, or try to find a way to use the technology to provide some services to kids that they may not otherwise have access to. So thinking about mental health services and counseling services and things like that. So I know in the spring, technology was used for students with IEPs to receive their therapies that way. But to the extent possible, I think, since we are all going through this experience that is traumatic, and more so for some of us than others, how can we use that technology to really make a difference in kids' lives beyond just academics? So, you know, I know there are, you know, different apps, like Headspace and therapy apps, and I don't, have no idea what the legal ramifications of that are, to roll that out to children, but if there are some things out there like that, that we could, since kids have access to technology this year, if there are ways we can supplement their health and wellness through technology beyond just academics, I think that would be really amazing and a good service for families.
So I want to address the legal aspect of the mental health kind of therapy. We have worked really hard to make sure that there's a secondary person with our staff when those kind of sessions are taking place, and that's the, that's the security that we try to put in place, while we're recording it. But I don't see that being problematic if we do those two things. Mrs. Sanom could jump in if he wants to, but I think it's consistent with what we've talked about before and what we did in March.
Anything else on restart? So are you asking for a vote, then, on the calendar?
I am. I'm asking the board, if they will tonight, to vote to push the school's start date back to August 31st, 2020, as well as to replace the professional development day of September 18 with a half-day on September 25th.
So I move that we move school start date to Monday, August 31st, and replace the professional development day that was scheduled for September 18th with a half-day professional development on September 25th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Further questions or discussion? Ms. Bell? Or Mr., who? Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Rody Collins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
The next item that I have for the board is, at the last board meeting, the board approved a naming and renaming of facilities policy. That policy was the first such policy by the district. Obviously, the district had a previous policy that wasn't as specific as this policy is. And so since the board has approved this policy, it was always my desire to come back once a policy was in place, to ask the board to consider the name change for a particular school, and I'll go through that in a second. It is my intent to bring that to a meeting on the 11th, but I want to frame why I think that's important. In the policy, it says, "A name shall not be considered, or shall be removed from the district facilities if the board determines that the named individual, group, or organization is not in compliance with the district's core beliefs and values or the terms of an agreement entered into with the district, which may include but may not be limited to conviction or deferred adjudication for felony or any crime involving moral perpetuity, as that term is interpreted by the courts, or participation in acts of discrimination, prejudice, or bias on the base of race, color, religion, gender, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, national origin, disability, age, immigration status, or any other basic prohibition of law." So I will be asking the board, based on this policy that the board has accepted and approved, that I will be bringing back a renaming or removing, not the renaming, of Canard Classical Junior Academy. I want the board to be prepared for my recommendation. I will literally be asking the board to remove the name, not to name any, not to put a name on it at this point in time, but to come back over the course of the year, as parents and others might be engaged in terms of coming up with a name. But beginning for the 2020, 21 school year, it would no longer be called Canard, but be called Classical Junior Academy. I will have a conversation with the PTO and those kind of persons over the course of the week to make them aware. Obviously, this has been, I went back to look at my records today, this has been a request in the making since 2016. For three years, they have been asking, others have been asking about this particular recommendation. We've done the deep dive of research, as I told you we would do, relative to the Canard's name, and so I have all kinds of documentation to provide to you, as well as looking at our archives, where the name came from, when it was voted on, all of those kinds of details that would give you information that you might want to have relative to it. And you will receive it prior to the board meeting on the 11th, but I want to make you aware that it will be a walk-on item on the 11th at the board meeting, and I'll be providing you with all of the information, such that if you have questions prior to that time, you could ask me, but I would be asking the board to approve the name prior to the school year starting on the 31st, and prior to teachers coming back on the 17th. The reason why you're seeing it now is because the board didn't approve the policy until last month, and so I could not make that recommendation until the board has accepted the policy and approved the policy. So that's, just want to make the board aware of, and take any questions that the board might have now, or any other further information they want to have prior to. That concludes my report, Madam President.
So we do have a few board updates, I think, overall, are relatively brief. So the first is, I wanted to provide an update on the Board Governance Committee. So as you know, that was a committee that was created by a board vote at our last meeting. At this time, there are no volunteers to be the chair. The board president cannot be the chair of that committee, so without a committee chair, we can't have a functioning committee. There were a couple volunteers to be an assistant chair. I am also willing to do the assistant chair position if someone would like to take the lead on that committee. It is work that really does need to be done. In particular, we will be, at some point, onboarding a new board member, and so that is a process that should be evaluated prior to bringing anyone new into the board. So I would ask, again, that you all consider serving as the chair of the Board Governance Committee, and if you are willing to do so, please let me know, but we can't schedule a committee meeting or move forward with that without a chair. Susan, update on retreat.
So as relates to the board retreat, as you all remember, in the last meeting, I was trying to get a consensus from our team about if we wanted to do an in-person or virtual board retreat, and only got a few responses back during that meeting, and so then I extended that to Friday of that week, and I still only heard from the same people that responded in the meeting that we had on that Tuesday. So at this time, I have responded back to those that did take the time to let us know their availability, to let them know that we will get back to this at a later time. And so this was largely due to us not having enough of a response from our team. And so it is my hope in the future that when, you know, questions are asked of this team for us to move forward, whether it is a yes or a no, that you give a response. Thank you.
And thank you, Susan, for, I know you had been working to interview facilitators and working with them to get some potential dates out there, so appreciate your work on that. Thank you.
No problem.
So for the bylaw, so this, the title of this bylaw would be Closed Session: In-Person Meeting Requirement Bylaw. It is not specific only to a pandemic, but we don't have anything that currently exists like this. So I'm not asking for a vote tonight unless everyone just loves this, but I did want to bring it to you for a first read and for discussion. So I will read it, just so it's into the video, so this is a draft, it has not been approved, but it is an emergency exception to closed session in-person requirement to facilitate full and complete transparency in Board of Education operations and to ensure, to ensure the confidentiality of closed session deliberations, board members shall be physically present at all closed session meetings. The Board of Education may authorize members to participate virtually if all of the following conditions apply and are certified in meeting minutes by a resolution of the majority of a quorum of the board. One, a federal, state, or local authority has declared a state of emergency, health emergency, or major disaster. A quorum of the Board of Education is physically present at the meeting, per the requirements of Section 610.015 of the revised Missouri State statutes. Number three, the school district has the technological capacity to facilitate virtual meeting attendance, voting, and participation by board members. And number four, the public and board members shall receive at least 24 hours' notice of the change to a virtual meeting format and appropriate instructions for how to join, participate, and vote during the virtual meeting. So I'll ask for any discussion or feedback on this potential bylaw at this time. So does your silence mean you love it or you hate it, or if we are all in agreement that it is necessary, we can move forward with the vote, if there is a motion to that effect?
Just looking over it one more time.
Sure, no problem.
And Dorothy, I read it and responded, and thank you for taking a look at the title.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion, or would you like to wait until the August meeting?
I don't know what far it's been asked, but there's, I have feedback, so I'm wanting to wait.
They have the opportunity to give a feedback in email?
Yeah, so this was provided, emailed this to everyone on Friday, there have been no changes since that email was made.
Yeah, I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if there is no motion, we will move on, until, give a moment for that.
Okay.
So, moving on, this I would like to vote tonight, because it's relatively routine and it provides more transparency and clarity to the district staff who facilitate our meetings, as well as get a date on our calendar. As you know, we typically meet on the second Tuesdays for our regular business meeting and the fourth Tuesday for work sessions. Every year in my tenure on this board, we've run into this problem with Thanksgiving Week and Christmas Week, both of which overlap with just district holidays in general. So I am asking that we move the November work session to the sec, I'm sorry, the third Tuesday, which would be November 17th. Is there any opposition to that? So is there a motion, we do our bylaw state, we have to vote on changes to the... So I will move that we make our November work session November 17th. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Bell?
Ms. S. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Rody Collins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Similarly, with Christmas Week, I'm requesting that we move the December meeting to December 15th, so I move that the December, I'm sorry, the December work session be December 15th. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Ms. Bell?
Ms. S. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Rody Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. So there is no further business on our work session agenda, is there a motion to adjourn? I will move that we adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bell?
Ms. S. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Dr. Rody, I'm sorry, Ms. Rody Collins?
Yes.
Even so, John.
And thank you for anyone who's tuning in later to watch this video, we know there were some live streaming issues, and this video will remain up on our district website for a long, long time, I don't know the endpoint, but for many months, you'll be able to access this. So our apologies on the live streaming, but it is available as a recorded, unedited video.